Good evening. Welcome, everybody here in council chambers and those who might be watching via the Internet. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Kingman City Council, held on Tuesday, October 18th, at 2022. We would like to ask our city clerk for a roll call.
Mayor Watkins?
Here.
Councilmember Mello?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Samley?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Rob Kelly of the Calvary Baptist Church. I would ask everybody to stand for that and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be offered by Councilwoman Mello.
Father, we do thank you so much for the United States of America, where we can freely come to this place and still pray openly in public. And I thank you for your Son, Jesus Christ, who came to this earth, who lived a sinless life, was crucified on the cross and shed his blood and died for the sins of the world. Thank you that he's risen again the third day. Thank you, Father, for the fact that he's coming back someday soon. I pray, Father, that for those that don't know Christ, that they would cry out in repentance and by faith trust him alone for salvation. Father, I thank you for Mayor Watkins and the City Council and for the first responders and for all the people that serve this city. I pray for them, that you would give them courage to stand up for what's right, give them courage to stand up for justice and peace, give them courage to stand up for the poor and the needy of the city. And, Father, I pray that you would put your hand of guidance and protection upon them. Father, I pray that they would cry out to you for wisdom as they seek to serve this city, that they would be servants for you. Father, I praise you and I thank you so much for this meeting. I pray that you would bless it and guide and direct in what's said and done here. Thank you for your goodness, Father, and for all you've done for us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number one on, well, actually, the council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with A R S 38-431 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. First on our agenda are appointments. One, A, City Council member appointment. At the October 4th, 2022 City Council meeting, staff was given direction to place an item on the agenda for appointment of Shawn Savage, the candidate that received the highest amount of votes, 4,785, at the August 2nd, 2022 primary election. Early to fill the current council vacancy, Mr. Savage was elected outright in the primary election for a four-year term, ending on December 1st, 2026. And, of course, it says council discretion. Any further discussion on this matter, council? Okay. Carl, do we need to do a motion with this?
An emotion for the appointment.
Okay. Okay. Can we have an emotion then for this appointment of Mr. Savage to City Council?
So moved.
Second.
Great, thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. Congratulations, Mr. Savage, and you're here tonight. Judge, glad you're here. Item one B, swearing in of newly appointed council member. City magistrate Jeff Singer will swear in newly appointed council member Shawn Savage.
Ready?
Yep.
Let's do it. All right, sir, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Shawn Savage...
I, Shawn Savage.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws...
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
The state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same...
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies...
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office...
Discharge the duties of the office.
Of Kingman City Council member...
Of Kingman City Council member.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Mr. Savage, if you'd like to come on and join us. Item one C under appointments, Planning and Zoning Commission reappointments. The Planning and Zoning Commission has two members whose first terms will end on December 31st, 2022. Both Commissioner Jen Swap and Commissioner Jed Noble have expressed interest in being reappointed to serve a second term from January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2026 on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and staff recommends reappointment. Any discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, can we have a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we reappoint both Jed Noble and Jen Swap to be commissioners on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none. Moving on to one D, Economic Development Advisory Commission appointment. The Economic Development Commission currently has one vacancy. The mayor and city manager have received and reviewed with staff four applications and are recommending the appointment of Daniel Valentine to a four-year term beginning on November 1st, 2022 and ending on December 31st, 2026. Staff recommends approval appointment. Any discussion from council about this appointment?
I do have a question.
Yes.
I'm the liaison to this commission, and there were four applications.
Yes.
Is there a reason why they weren't moved on? Like, why I didn't get to see them or...
Well, the ordinance that was adopted by council had changed for review of all the applications through a scoring process that went through the team, me, and the mayor. And so, Mr. Valentine's was moved forward as the one that best suited and met the needs of the E D C.
Okay, perfect. I just, I also wanted to make that public because it has changed. So, thank you for bringing that to my attention.
And we, I think that his application was part of the packet. And so, I think we, along with Economic Development team, had scored it with, we've got a scoring sheet now, so.
Okay.
Yep.
And I did see it in the packet. I just wondered where the other ones were, so that explains it. Thank you.
Thank you. No, and Councilwoman Samley, I appreciate you bringing that up and bringing it forward that everybody understands because you're not the only council member that has had a question about that.
Yeah.
So, I do appreciate that.
With that, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Daniel Valentine to a four-year term, beginning November 1st, 2022, and ending on December 31st, 2026.
Okay, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Great, thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item number two, awards and recognition. We have a proclamation of the extra mile day for me to read, and so I will do that. Whereas, Kingman, Arizona is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively, and this is in quotation marks, go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And Kingman, Arizona is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And Kingman, Arizona is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And Kingman, Arizona acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 500 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2022. Now, therefore, I Ken Watkins, mayor of the City of Kingman, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, November 1st, 2022, as Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. And, of course, I have signed this proclamation. I think this is so important that we recognize those individuals that make a difference in our lives and in our community and give them thanks for doing so. And so, I would hope everybody would support us in this proclamation. And Clerk Meredith, is there anything to add to this?
No, sir. The representatives weren't available to be here to accept it tonight, so I'll make sure that they get that proclamation.
Great, thank you very much.
Mayor, before you move on...
Yes, Mayor.
So, one of the things that we wanted to do that I failed to point out is that Mr. Valentine is here. We would just like him, if you would ask him to stand and be recognized as our newest E D C member, that would be wonderful.
Yes. Mr. Valentine, you are here, present, and we appreciate you being here. Is there anything you'd like to say to council? Okay.
Thank you.
And once again, congratulations on that nomination.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Item number three, call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. Clerk Annie?
Thank you, Mayor. We have not had anybody registered to join us via Zoom tonight, nor were any written comments received ahead of time, and nobody in chambers this evening has signed up to address council.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number four, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. And I hope all council members have had a chance to review the items on, it's a short list tonight, which is good, items A through D. Are there any comments or is there any item that needs to be pulled for discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to pull item B, please.
Item B, okay.
I have a conflict of interest.
Okay. Anything else? Any other discussion, I think? Okay, hearing none, can we have a motion for items on the consent agenda for items A, C, and D for approval? And we have a second. Yes, thank you, Mr. Savage. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion carries. Item four B, Resolution Number 5435, approving 180-day extension of time on a preliminary plat for Kingman Crossing tract 1993. And I think, Councilwoman Samley, you've explained it all, or do you need anything more?
No, it just mentions my employer, so I'd just like to state my conflict of interest. Thank you.
Okay, real good. Can we have a motion then with the exclusion of Councilwoman Samley voting on it of item four B, Resolution Number 5435? And can we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye of this motion?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item number five, old business, we have none. Item number six, new business, item six A, water variance request for Wallack Ranch tract 1961-K, engineering 22-0072. Pete Profit, on behalf of Shannon Nugent, has submitted a variance request for the Wallack Ranch tract 1961-K subdivision. The engineering department, the public works department, and the fire department have provided comments for this request. All recommend denial of the variance. In a previous action by the City Council, the final plat and improvement plans were approved via Resolution 4260 on March 6th, 2006. The water main in Willow Road was required at that time and was shown on the approved plans. The intent has been to have a water main extend all the way to Gordon Drive. On August 25th, 2022, the Municipal Utility Commission heard the request and recommended approval of the variance with a vote of six to one. Staff recommends denial. Mr. Alred, welcome.
Thank you.
Brian Engineering Department, we'll turn some time over to you.
Thank you. Good evening. As you said previously, this is a variance request for the Wallack Ranch tract 1961-K subdivision. The property is located, and I've got a map up on the screen here. It's located on the southwest corner of Gordon Drive and Willow Road. Property is about 13.8 acres and is proposed to have 57 single-family residences on the property. The applicant is requesting a variance to the utility regulations which require a water main in Willow Road along the frontage of the development. Instead, the applicant is proposing to use the existing infrastructure in Wallack Ranch Drive and then extend a water main north through Allen Lad Drive on the interior street portion of the development, and then they would create a tract or an easement to make a connection into Gordon Drive. The city utility regulations state the following. The developer is required to extend the water system to and through the development as necessary to ensure adequate supply to the development and access to properties beyond the development. And then, in more specific, fire hydrants are to be located as to be readily accessible, plainly visible, at 500-foot intervals. All extensions to the water system shall begin at the nearest point determined to be adequate by the water superintendent, and a public extension is required to extend across the total fringe of the property to be served. As mentioned before, the engineering department and the public works department and the fire department provided comments. I must apologize, I thought I included that in the packet, so I just thought I'd show those comments real quick. My comments are basically what I just stated, what the utility regulations require. The public works department is recommending denial. Their reasons are primarily operational reasons. They are looking for better looping, and looping helps with system pressures, helps with system redundancy. If a line goes down, we have additional opportunity to still run the system. And then, again, it just helps with the diversity and efficiency of the system. It helps with water quality. And so, from those operational standpoints, the public works department isn't in favor of the variance. And then, the fire department made a comment, and they just want to make sure that a fire hydrant on Willow Road is installed. One additional fire hydrant between Gordon and the south end of their property would be required. And it's much better just to have a short connection right onto a water main. And so, that's another reason why we're recommending what we are recommending. So, you know, a public water extension is required, and I also mentioned the fire hydrant. And as mentioned before, in a previous action in 2006 by the City Council, this development actually had a final plat approved with accompanying improvement plans, and that approval still stands at this point in time. And the plans that accompanied the final plat application showed a water main in Willow Road. Development in the area to date has installed a water main has installed a water main in Willow Road. So, the most recent development to the south extended it north, and then they stubbed it out to the north. And then, as part of a project some time ago, the city did a water main in Gordon Drive and provided a stub to the south. And so, the intent has been to have, when this parcel develops, is to have the water main connect to the two stubs. Staff feels that this infrastructure is needed and is part of the required improvements. You know, the applicants installing street improvements on their side, and so this is something that just normally would be included as part of the required improvements. I'd just like to mention, we have a responsibility to our ratepayers to ensure that the required improvements go in, particularly if the city needs to go back in at some date and time if it doesn't get installed, and then we would have to go in and install it, right? It's important that, as a public utility, that we all recognize that we need redundancy and as much redundancy in the system as we can get. We can't predict when or how failures occur, nor can we predict how the needs of the system will change over time. We try our best, but we can't always predict. So, what our utility regulations require and what we're asking for is what we feel is best practice as a public utility providing water service to our residents. And it just helps with overall viability, long-term viability of our system. We just want to make sure that, you know, if something did happen on the interior streets that basically cut off access, we don't want to have a problem delivering service throughout our system because of some sort of problem on the interior road of a residential subdivision. And finally, as, you know, the Municipal Utility Commission did hear this request in August, and they did recommend approval of the variance six to one. So, with all that information, if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. The applicant is here as well, and the other departments, I'm sure if there's questions for the fire or public works department, they would be available for questions as well.
Turn my mic back on. Thanks, Phil. Question, I guess, to start with. Well, I recognize the importance of looping. That is the best practices across cities across the country, is water looping. So, in case there is a problem, you can isolate one. You know, it reduces the amount of service that is cut off to other people. So, that's an important fact. Where did the fire department suggest that they were going to put another?
Well, so...
Fire hydrant?
There's a fire hydrant up here, and there's a fire hydrant down here.
Okay.
So, somewhere in the middle, they'll need a fire hydrant.
I think for that, that one major reason is most compelling for our first responders and for fire department. That is one issue that does come up. Okay, I appreciate all the answers. Councilwoman Staley has a question.
I have a couple of questions. First, I want to know what the justification is for bringing this item back to the council? Because the last time we heard one of these, I thought we made it pretty clear that we're not interested in overturning past council's decisions.
I guess if we want to go that route, I think that would require some sort of change in ordinance. Right now, as it stands, they can make the request.
I feel that if there aren't any changes to the scope of the project or any changes to our requirements, then there is no reason to bring this back before us to ask us to undo the work of the council in 2006. I just, in everything you're telling us, why we need this water main, it doesn't justify, you know, asking the taxpayers to pay for this project. So, I'm kind of frustrated to see this on the agenda. It's a waste of this council's time.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Did I ask a question? Was there justification? Is there a real reason to bring this back to us?
You said you had a couple of questions.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I'm frustrated.
It's all good.
I'll let the applicant speak to the justification.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Alred? Councilwoman Samley?
So, my understanding is when this was approved back in 2006, the expectation of the developer was to extend that. So, I'm kind of on the same page as Counselor Staley. I'd like to hear from the applicant why they are wanting in a variance when they already had an approved project with the expectation that that water main would go in. Did they put the water main along Wallack Ranch Drive when they installed? Or did they do that, or the city do that?
A previous phase of Wallack Ranch did that.
So, likely the same developer?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. So, this just completes the project, as far as I'm concerned. So, I would like to hear from the applicant. But, again, I think it's just the cost of doing business. It looks like it's a completion of the proposed project, and unless I can hear something other than that that's compelling from the applicant, I'm inclined to deny as well. I am curious, though. Why did the Municipal Utilities Commission approve six to one? This is highly unusual.
They... It's hard for me to say, but some of the comments, they says, oh, we think this is redundant, and that was kind of my point. It's like, we need redundancy in our system. So, I think they just kind of thought, hey, this is an extra water line. But, in reality, we want it for redundancy to our system.
Okay, thank you.
That's what looping is all about, is redundancy, water looping. Okay. Any other comments or questions from Mr. Alred? Okay. Mr. Peter Profit?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
Counsel, my name is Peter Profit. I work for Mojave Engineering Associates. I'm the engineer for the subdivision. I can start in a couple different places, but I guess we'll just start with the past approval of this subdivision. So, the reason we're coming back with these plans is because staff has made us redo the plans. So, the approvals that we had in 2006, we could not go develop the subdivision. We had to redo all the plans. The final plat will be coming before you as soon as we can get this issue resolved. We've been through one review of the staff comments. We've been working on several different items. This is the last issue that we are trying to get resolved, and we'll have the plans come before you. The final plat will have to be renewed, so. So, uh, I believe if we could have built this according to the 2005 regulations, that it would probably be built by now. I mean, we've been working on this many months since last year. So, when we have to do a subdivision, uh, the, regarding the water insurance who are, uh, that were required to do a model, right? The city has an overall model, a ver- very complex model, and we, we're required to take our new lots and model that particular development and do the best we can to see how it affects the whole water system. So, the way that's done is you, we have tests from, on the fire hydrants from the Fire Department. We put that in the model, and then we see what happens when we put the, all these homes and all these new fire hydrants that we're going to put in on the system. So, we did that in 2005. We did it. It said that this wa- wa- Willow Water Line was required, so, but now here we are, fifteen, seventeen years later, the water system is different. The city's done improvements. Water systems, uh, actually improve functionality when there's more connections to them. There's been many more phases of Wallack Ranch. So, all these factors come together to, we do the model, and it says the Willow, Willow Road is not, not required. So, I mean, just to begin with, that's the reason we're coming here, is because it's not required as our subdivision regulations, right? So, we go down the checklist, does the water model require this, uh, line? The answer to that is no. So, technically, it's not required, right? So, then, we're looking at the situation with looping the water line, okay? We are looping the water line. We're connecting to the existing water line at three different places. There's two streets coming off of Wallack Ranch Drive. There's one street coming off of Gene Autry. We're connecting to it in three places. So, those connections will loop it from Gene Autry all the way up to Gordon Drive. So, we are looping the system. And again, this is what, this is the redundancy that we're adding to the system, is we're, we're adding one more connection to Wallack Ranch and to Gordon Drive. So, that's, uh, that's the process that led us here, is, uh, technically going through the subdivision regulations that were required to meet, it, it's not required. So, now, we're looking at the utility regulations, and it does, the regulations do stipulate that a water line is required to extend across the frontage of a property, right? So, frontage is, uh, listed eighteen times. That word is listed eighteen times in the MUC regulations, right? So, we believe that we're meeting the regulations because the frontage of all of our lots will have water line extended through them. So, if you look at this, uh, particular parcel as one parcel, the frontage could be Gordon Drive or Willow Road. So, I mean, I, I'm not intending to split hairs, I'm just saying, looking at that regulation as it's written, does not appear to apply to subdivisions where we're putting in, uh, four new fire hydrants, um, I think fifteen hundred feet of water line, fifty-seven connections, fifty-seven sewer connections. We're making all those new lots. So, I don't, I'm, I don't believe that the MUC regulation applies to a new subdivision. As far as, uh, as that goes, so technically, the Willow Road, um, line is not going to provide any improved functionality for the system. Now, of course, there, more line could potentially pose an easier, uh, maintenance job for the city, but, um, that's been hard to us to envision. If any line inside of this subdivision goes down, there's three more connections, like I said, all the way around to Gordon Drive. Uh, and there's not a foreseeable situation where that's going to impact any service to the rest of this area. Although, there's no lots fronting Willow Road that would need a fire hydrant or water service connections. All the lots on the east side of Willow Road, front on La, La Mida, I believe it is, which is parallel to Willow Road, little, little further east of the picture here, there's a fire hydrant, there's fire hydrants on that line, there's a water line in La Mida. So, from an access point, uh, as, as far as fire hydrants go, it would just be a fire hydrant for the right-of-way. Um, so, the Fire Department comments actually say, they reference a fire, the fire code that reads, um, this is 102.9. It says, "requirements that are essential for the public safety of an existing or proposed activity, building, or structure, or for the safety of the occupants thereof, that are not specifically provided for the, by this code, shall be determined by the fire code official." So, I mean, obviously, the fire code has the authority to request or require this fire hydrant, but this code is referring to existing structures, not to just an open right-of-way. The, and then the second code, 102.11, just says, "the provisions of this code shall not be deemed to nullify any provisions of local, state, or federal law." So, there's no, there's no specific fire code that says we have to have fire hydrants in this right-of-way. The code does say we have to have fire hydrants every five hundred feet. We do have that planned for our subdivisions. We have four new fire hydrants. Those, along with the exterior fire hydrants, there'll be seven fire hydrants, uh, accessible. And like I say, we'll be improving the, uh, flow to the existing fire hydrants because we're looping the system. We're looping it from the end of Gene Autry, which connects out to the line in Willow, up to Gordon Drive. So, that's kind of, from the lower right-hand picture, we're going to be looping it all the way up into Gordon Drive. Um, as, as far as the 2006 approval goes, I ca- I mentioned why we're here, because that was approved. Now, it's not approved, uh, and that water line was on those plans. Another thing that's changed on those plans, it was, uh, in this redesign that we've had to bring everything up to current regulations, we've had to provide about six thousand square feet of additional property for retention. So, on the first plan, we had a certain amount of retention. Since then, the city's regulations, uh, there's been new drainage studies, and some of the variables that were required to use for drainage studies have changed. It increased the, the, um, it increased the amount of retention that were required. So, so we essentially lost the size of a lot. Some of the lots were bigger, and we were able to, to, or, no, I'm sorry, we did lose one lot, and the rest of the lots were big enough that we could pare them down, so we didn't have to lose that. So, we've already lost one lot to meet the drainage regulations. Now, um, we get to the point with this fire line, as far as cost, which I know is not a relevant point to make a decision if we're violating any code, but at this point in my discussion, I, I, I believe that I'm trying to present that we, we are meeting the code. Now, we have the cost of this water line. Um, obviously, the costs for water lines have went up significantly since 2005. Uh, in this situation, there's existing culverts under North Willow we would have to go o- o- under. And the biggest point is, um, in the corner of Gordon and Willow, there is a power pole with three guy wires. This water line is going to run behind the sidewalk. It's not in the road like most, most water lines would be. So, it's got to run up behind the sidewalk, and it runs right where those guy wires are. So, um, even without understanding if it's going to be technically possible to put a water line that close to these guy wires in this pole, even without all that, the cost is about sixty-seven thousand dollars. So, we've lost a lot, have this extra cost. And so, again, all that's going back to the question of why we're here, and that this is why we're just trying to have this discussion, to see if the council agrees that, um, you know, there, if there's other options that we can, um, that we can pursue with this. And there are a couple options that I can present. If there's any questions, though, I can answer them now, and, um, I guess I'll leave it at that, if there's any questions.
Okay, counsel, questions for Mr. Profit? Yes? Oh, yeah, okay, counsel. Yes, Mr. Savage?
Hello, and thanks for coming. You said there's going to be fifty-seven lots available?
Yes.
What's the cost of the project to do that?
Um, honestly, I can't remember off the top of my head.
Be nice to know.
Okay.
Um, because there could be certain ways around that to where it won't cost the city, but I would like to know what the actual cost of the project's going to be, please.
What, what would the cost of the city be?
No, that new project, you guys want to extend to Gordon, what's the cost of that going to be?
That's right. That, I, I do know that.
Okay.
It's about sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Oh, that is sixty-seven thousand?
To put the new line in and add a fire hydrant. The fire hydrants are, have gone up too, just like everything else, but.
Okay. Councilwoman Saly? Look, if you have a question?
Yeah, I do. So, I'm just wondering how the modeling can be so different? You, you put it into your modeling, and it appears to be looping, and pressures are good, and I know we're going off of ordinances, and, um, you know, I, I'm concerned about fire safety, so I, I would like to know if it makes much difference to have that hydrant there, and it would be offset with the other hydrants that you have? I guess I would, that would be a question for the chief, um, but, or for Mr. Foggan. Um, but yeah, I, this is tough. I mean, you, you did explain every concern and, and why I, I would be compelled to deny. Um, and so, I'm not sure if you did the same to MUC, and that's why they, why, why they came to the realization that they did and voted six to one. Um, things have changed, and I'm sure the way the water is flowing in that area has changed since it was first approved. So, I mean, with that consideration, I don't know. I, you gave some compelling arguments.
Well, I appreciate that, and, um, you know, that's, that's what we're looking at, whatever the council desires, that we can, there's other ways to try to connect that line to avoid having to go up Willow. Um, and that, you know, we, there's other ways to have a fire hydrant on Willow that don't require this whole line extension.
So, I, my question also is, um, have you presented those options to staff, and were you met with some compromise? And is, is there anything that can be done?
Well-
As you propose, or has that discussion not even happened yet?
I mean, it, it's happened on a theoretical level, so, but it got to the point where th- this is where we're at, just, we're not going to consider any options because we think, I, I'm sorry, paraphrasing city staff, we, we want this water line in Willow, so we're not going to consider any other options. So, I mean, technically, yes, it'll work. I mean, technically, another option will work, because technically, uh, we, it's not required, right? So, any, if, any redundancy can be planned for at a different location besides just this Willow extension, because the redundancy doesn't make the math of the model work any different i- in this particular location, right?
Right.
So, I mean, as the mayor pointed out, looping is always something that we have to do, and that, and we're doing that here, but adding another line, it's just, because we're going to be running a line up our road, which is Allen Land or Allen Lad Drive, and having a line run up parallel to Willow, just, uh, you know, would be a hundred and fifty feet away, doesn't, it doesn't do anything for, for the operating parameters of the system.
And that's kind of where I'm going with this. It's, I mean, I, I'd like to, i- if, if those discussions could happen, I don't know what your timeline is, but, you know, it seems like there could be compromise in this situation to where the city could get the optimal, uh, water flow, and, and we could come to some kind of compromise. So, I, I'd like, I'd like to see that. Phil's coming up to, to talk, so, I mean-
Well, actually, I have another question for, for Mr. Profit, if that's all right. How many lots, you say fifty-seven for this planned right now? How many lots were planned back in 2006 when you originally submitted this plat?
There was one more, one more lot.
Okay, so you only, you've only lost one because of the, of the drainage?
Yes.
Okay. So, when this was designed in 2006, basically all the streets, everything else is the same?
Yes.
Okay. And so, once again, returning to the fact that the City Council said, yes, they would supply you with all the city services for this if you accepted this. That acceptance was determined on also accepting the water line going up Willow. So, referring back to Councilwoman Staley, on the same token too, if that hasn't changed, yeah, they're okay, yeah, sure, there's more water users in the area. Uh, Wallack Ranch is almost built out, except for this one parcel now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but those same plans that were submitted back in 2006 have not changed as far as what the water lines are going to be at.
Well, I mean, that's a point, uh, that's, that's a fine point. I, I would not agree with that statement you just made, because we're not allowed to use those plans. So, they have changed, they've had to be redone.
Well, okay, but the basic thought, the basic line was you were going to have a water line up Willow, you're going to have, back then, I'm sure you're going to have water lines on Allen Lad and also on, uh, uh, the other street there, Rex Allen. So, obviously, there are going to be supply lines there, but those main, those basic water lines were already in place and designed, that's what the City Council accepted back then.
They were required-
Of course.
-with the pressures of the model, not just for redundancy.
Right.
At that time, the way the water system was, I mean, there's been improvements since and, and more, more houses, a lot of houses added to the line since then, so-
Correct.
It's a different, if, it's a different system now than it was then.
Well, but, yes, but no, but you had already designed this general plat for all those homes that are built out. That was the whole idea in the whole general plan back in 2006, was when, as this progressed and built out. Obviously, because of, uh, recession, other things, that construction has been slowed down. But the basic idea and plat map that you presented back in 2006, yes, there are tweaks now because of code changes, but basic, basic path where water lines were going to go, it has not changed, correct?
Uh, uh, yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I? Um, Mr. Profit, what's changed since 2006 to today to make that model different?
I can't say exactly. I know there's been improvements, that what, there was a big, a big new line put in on Keno, that extends here, and again, those houses, since, since we had this, uh, phase developed, there's three new, three phases on the house, on the water system now, or more than three phases. I would say that's easily a couple hundreds, two-hundred-and-fifty lots possibly.
Okay.
Uh, and so, the way that the, the model works when there's more system, I, I mean, generally, if you're just looking at, at the water model, like, if you can break it down to X, Y, Z, if there's more demand, more use on the system, the, the mains, the water mains that are serving your demands are, are, function in a different way. And so, you know, I mean, for instance, the Fire Department gets regular pressures on the, the lot, the hydrants, the Fire Department does that, and if they're not meeting regulation, they can change things in the system and do improvements or change water line sizes. And again, I think that, I mean, maybe Phil knows exactly, but I think the biggest thing is that big, uh, im- uh, improvement on Keno. I mean, the line, I believe the line was upsized, and it serviced this whole, um, if you're familiar with the water zones in the city, I mean, it's serv- it's improved the system in this whole zone theoretically. I believe that's why the city did it, so.
So, we have redundancy through the neighborhood that could get us from the south to the north?
Yes.
And, um, the new models show that it'll flow without that line?
Yes.
Okay. I, I called, I could only get one of them to answer, because I think a couple guys are on vacation, but I did call a MUC member, and I said, "What is this?" And he said that, we looked at it, it was redundant, and that's why they voted the way they did, you know, the-
Correct.
Six to one or five to one?
Six to one.
Yeah.
And I was at that meeting-
Okay.
-of MUC, and I think that was, you know, redundancy, but once again, that's what water looping is all about, is redundancy. And so, that's my argument. Yes, Manager Foggan?
So, I, I, as much as I appreciate, uh, Mr. Profit talking about our system, we have experts, uh, that would be happy to share that information with you-
Correct.
-and would encourage you to glean that information, um, from the people that are actually running the system.
Thank you.
Again, Mayor?
Yes.
Again, my question would be, how is the modeling so different then? I guess that's my question to the expert, Phil Allred.
So, um, I, I guess this kind of makes my point, is that the system changes over time. And so, um, right now, as the system is currently functioning, is functioning well in that area. The, the city needs to have the ability to make adjustments to the system. We, we try to operate our system, you know, within a certain pressure range, and as, as we get more connections or as circumstances change, we make adjustments within the system, right? And so, it's, it's important to know that, yeah, it, it works now, it didn't work then, and, um, I, I'd have to go back and look at all the modeling. There, there certainly have been improvements on the periphery of, of the area that, that has improved the water supply, um, you know, the, 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 the development to the south actually, you know, brought water up, Willow Road, um, and, and it's kind of the same thing. We're, we're, we're wanting it to continue north to, to provide, um, better circulation, better pressure, um, for, for our system. And so, um, models change over time, and so, what may work now may not work in the future. And so, the way we build our, our system is through these best practices of, of, of requiring the, the line to extend along the frontage. There was, there was a, a note about, you know, the, frontage includes, um, both sides. I- if, if your lot's double-fronted, it's, it's double-fronted, so it still requires, um, um, that, the, the rear, in this case, since it is double-frontage, it is considered frontage. That, that's how it's defined. Um, just because there aren't any homes fronting Willow doesn't preclude the need for needing a fire hydrant on Willow Road. There, um, there may be a fire, like a, a semi-truck, for example, um, something within the right-of-way that needs a water supply. And so, that's why we require hydrants, um, at certain intervals to help our, our Fire Department, um, do their job. So, I think, did that answer the question? Okay.
Okay. Councilwoman Staley has a question.
Um, Mr. Profit had stated that he doesn't think this is required, but what I'm hearing you say is it's your opinion that it is required.
It is. That's, that's, that's what we're requiring developments to do. Other developments have done this.
And these- And these other options, these other possibilities, do they meet the requirements for the, for the subdivision that he's talking about? These other options instead of water?
We're saying no.
Okay. I mean, just clarifying. So, I'm back to my original point. Nothing has changed. And what we're talking about here is spending $67,000 of taxpayer dollar, taxpayer money to put in a water line to serve this development. We're subsidizing, we're being asked to subsidize a project, a private project that is for profit in a time where we do not have the money to pay for a lot of other water infrastructure projects that are necessary. And also a time when we have a record number of water line breaks all over town that we don't have the funding, budgeted, or the manpower to fix. So, we are in quite a pickle when we talk about our water system. And we're being asked to subsidize $67,000 taxpayer money. I cannot support this item.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can we get just one clarification? Their taxes do not go towards the water system. These are paid by user fees, so.
Water rates.
But, but if, if we waived this requirement and had to put in that line.
Users would pay for it.
The users would pay. We would not pay, we would not use budgeted taxpayer money.
That's, that's correct. It's a utility that is treated as an enterprise fund and is funded through user fees. So, the users of the system would pay for that.
But that would be, clarification, that's still all users on the system, correct?
Right. I just not, I just want to make clear that tax, taxes are not used for our water system.
But our citizens are still making up the $67,000 bill.
Yep.
Versus the builder who's profiting from this project. So, thank you for that clarification, but still the same idea. I don't think our citizens want their money being spent on this water line when it was originally a requirement, and it was something that everybody agreed to in 2006. And it doesn't sound like anything's changed. They had to give up a lot, but, I mean, look at all the water we got this year. Had they not turned that into a retention pond, now you've got a new house that just probably flooded and buyers that are suing. So, it was necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Well.
Yes.
Well.
If every single time we say yes to a variant, a variance, why do we have ordinances? Why do we have rules? If, if he doesn't have to follow them, then neither does she. And we're at a point at this stage of the game, let's just tell them all to hell with it. Let's just throw our ordinances out because it doesn't matter. If, we've got to start taking care of Kingman, and we need to make the people that make money off of Kingman help us take care of Kingman, period. And that is our job, sitting up here. That is what we do as city council. And if you can't hear it in my voice, you know I'm madder than hell about this whole thing being brought up here. This is ridiculous. And I'm sorry that I'm sounding so angry, but no, not no, but hell no. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nelson. Any other comments or questions for either Mr. Allred or Mr. Profit?
Mr. Mayor, may I add another comment?
Mr. Profit?
I would just like to ask if there's a, any provision in what the council would decide about the water line being right where a power line's going to be? I mean, we just got to figure it out, or is there any provision to make, have an option that includes not, that the city, that the city engineer would approve that is not a water line in Willow?
Pete, that's a good question, but I know, and when I run into those kinds of questions in my business, I have to figure it out.
Okay.
I'm, so, I'm, you know, I'm trying to be compassionate, on the same token too, it is a cost of doing business.
I, I very much appreciate the opportunity to come and address the council and to Councilwoman Nelson, Nelson's comments. I feel very strongly about this whole process, and I believe that the reason for the council's existence is to hear things like this, because there is black and white ordinances, federal, state laws. I mean, this is how it works, right? This is part of the process. So, I'm actually getting upset now too, because I feel totally offended that I'm being, you know, shot down for trying the system and for, and for, and the owners too. We went through the whole process. We spent months with the city. We went to MUC, and here we are. And I refuse to be embarrassed about being here because I explained why we came here and how we led to this point. So, I appreciate your time and I do appreciate your comments, and, and I value your judgment. And, and, you know, however you decide, I value that too, so, thank you.
Well, and I appreciate your comments, and you're right. I think this is every citizen's right to come forward and have a voice in city, you know, in front of city council. And this is what you're doing and exercising that right, so I commend you on that.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes. Councilwoman Staley?
In the interest of trying to figure something out, to the applicant, he wasn't given an opportunity to even talk about any other opportunities other than an extension on Willow. So, if, if we could keep, if we could keep the city whole and we could do something that makes sense to where they wouldn't have to figure it out, why is that not an option?
My thoughts, again, back to the cost of doing business, he should have presented those options to the city and working through those plans. Working through all of that that, that he was putting in place. I have an option here, I have an option here. That should have already been done before it ever came to MUC.
To his comment though, he was shut down and not allowed to do that because they, it, it was this way or they had to go through this process first. So, I, I feel like, to the applicant, if, if that's even possible, so, I'm going to support, I'm going to support the applicant's request, but that's just my.
Yes.
One clarification. This is whether or not you're going to approve the requested variance or not.
Correct.
There's no other option.
It's pretty cutting edge.
I, I understand that, Mr. Cooper.
So, I think we're ready for a motion. So, if we can have a motion to approve the water variance request for Wallack Ranch, tract 1961-K, Engineering 22-0072.
I would move that we deny the request for a variance.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor of denial of the water variance request, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. So moved. Thank you once again. I appreciate the discussion on all of this, and, and anyway, I don't think there's any more to be said about it, but thank you. Item number seven, Department Reports. Item 7A, First Responder Veteran Program.
So, I'd like to introduce Judge Singer and Chief Cooper, who will be presenting on this program.
It's a tag team.
It is. So, um.
Judge, welcome.
I think the chief's been instructed to taze me if I go too long here, so, I'm probably weary of him by me, but.
That would just be fun to see.
Yeah, right. Yes, Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and I will try to do my best to keep it brief here, so. I wanted to present to you all a, yes, a joint project between the court and the Kingman Police Department, referencing our veterans and our veteran liaison program that we have worked together to help put together, to come together with. And, and actually, we're going to be kicking off tomorrow before our Vet Court graduation. How this came about, I, again, had the privilege and opportunity to represent Kingman at the National Vet Court Conference in Nashville in July, and again, had the opportunity to present there. And so, after everybody woke up from my presentation, there was a different presentation there about basically a veteran liaison program with their police department. It was with the Cincinnati Police Department. And as Carl can attest, sometimes the best evidence, we follow the best evidence rule, will be straight from the horse's mouth. So, I've got a, about a three-minute video here that explains about how their program originated. They, they spoke at the conference, and I thought, when I brought it back to Kingman, that what a great opportunity for Kingman to do something similar to this. Again, Cincinnati's a lot bigger town than, than Kingman, but, well, wanted to do kind of a, a similar project. And I got with Chief Cooper and Deputy Chief Reed, and we, we've been working on this. And so, want to show you what they're doing in Cincinnati, and, and then Chief Cooper can explain how we're going to move forward and implement this here in Kingman. So, if we can play the video? Do I play, no?
A program created within the Cincinnati Police Department is being pushed out statewide, and it's a legacy an Army veteran will leave behind as he looks toward retirement.
I guess I'll look at it as the way I made a little bit of it back in the world.
Sergeant Dave Corlett is the last person you'd see volunteer to go in front of the camera to talk about himself. In fact, it took me a couple of weeks to get him to agree to sit down with me in Washington Park to discuss part of the legacy he will leave behind.
Something that was so easy to do, and, and all I had to do was put together the right people to do it.
Corlett created the military liaison group within the department, an internal team of former military ready to respond when officers come across a veteran in distress.
Last year, we were, you know, about 1,000 officers, over 300 veterans in the department. So, we're more than 30% veteran department, which really allowed me to very easily expand further.
Corlett served in the Army. Enamel pin on his uniform shows it off proudly, and it's part of what creates that connection to a veteran when these officers respond.
The communication that goes on between two veterans is much different than the communication that would go on between a law enforcement officer and a veteran. The, the ability to have relatable experiences is just, you can't get any better than that.
It's part of the de-escalation of a situation, which then turns into a member of the MLG getting the veteran the help they need. And it's a program that has had great success. Corlett recalls the situation of a barricaded veteran threatening suicide.
Our crisis negotiator, I've been on the phone with him for 90 minutes before he remembered that, that we existed. Called me, woke me up, said, "I need you down here." 10 minutes later, he walked out, surrendered to me, and I personally drove him up to the Veterans Administration Hospital.
Now, the state of Ohio, the AG's office is looking to at least push it out as a major recommendation for departments statewide. What does that feel like?
I, I'm, I'm thrilled, I'm honored. We've always said that our goal was to expand this program. We believe this should be something nation-wide.
I was so impressed by this. I immediately talked to my team and said, "We need to push this out around the state. We need to help other departments begin to do this." Ohio Attorney General Dave Yo says, "While it's not a requirement for departments to roll out the program, it is highly encouraged due to its positive impact on veterans and the officers on patrol." Cincinnati has a great idea here. They're leading, and I've got a big microphone. I'm trying to get around the state and say, you know, "We think this is worthwhile."
This program brought me back to that place where I know I'm making a difference, and that was my goal, was placing the image.
Now, the cost to implement this program is literally little more than just the cost of the enamel pins that they wear on their uniform there. Sergeant Corlett says that, as it stands right now, there are typically about three veterans on duty at any given time to be able to respond. So, pretty much every district has a veteran on duty, which is fantastic. So, I appreciate them taking the time to sit down. This powerful $99 drone is now available in the U.S. This is an extremely high-end drone.
Do I stop this, or do they?
He's trying.
Okay, all right. So, next, I was going to see if y'all would be interested in buying the court a drone. So, we've got them on sale here. I'm going to let Chief Cooper talk about how they're going to implement that, and then I'll probably wrap it up and explain what we're going to be doing tomorrow at the Veterans Court to kind of kick this off. So, Chief?
Thanks, Judge. Aaron, can you put up my PowerPoint while I'm talking for a minute, if you're able to do that? So, what made this an easy yes for me? It was something we had sort of been doing informally over the years. When we had someone in crisis, we'd call upon a veteran if we had him on duty, and it, I couldn't give you an exact, but I know we've done it. So, with the increase in our veteran population, with the increase of veterans in crisis, this was just an easy yes to put a formal title to it and make it a formal program in what we're doing. We don't have the size that they do in Cincinnati, so we don't have the ability to dedicate a squad or a team necessarily. But out of the 14 members that are, at my department that are veterans, that turns out to about 40% of them are actively on our patrols, uniform patrol squad. And I don't believe in coincidences, but we're fortunate that they're evenly divided amongst all of the patrol squads as well. So, it's working out very well. And the cost literally was those lapel pins, and I'll show you those here in the next slide. So, it's something that's easy. We can put some purpose behind it now. We can put some structure to it. We're working on what that will look like with our dispatch center, because we have to know who's working, and we're still working through how that's going to work. But we've already talked about it internally, it's already in place. It hasn't been activated, but it's something that we are very much aware of. And those veterans that are serving are very excited about it. Not only is it an opportunity to celebrate them as individuals, which we try to do, it's also giving them additional purpose. Because what they're doing currently is wonderful. It's making a difference, and it's just one more thing that we can utilize their skills and their experience at, to relate. And again, the veteran population's increasing, and those veterans entering into a crisis, so some is increasing as well. So, this is wonderful. So, we have a purpose statement, and it's in cooperation with the municipal court, Veterans Court. The KPD Veteran Liaison Program is going to empower police officers, who are military veterans, to provide assistance to fellow veterans in crisis. Next slide, Aaron. I don't know, I don't want to touch it. All right, I did it. Nope, sorry, Aaron, I knew that was going to happen. So, these are the lapel pins that we're going to get currently, and those are what Judge Singer is going to distribute tomorrow. I'm trying, I'm wanting as many of my officers that can be there as possible, so I'm hoping it's a good turnout. But we want to make it a very special thing, and those are the, the pins that they're going to be wearing, so. I applaud Judge Singer for his passion for the veterans. You've heard his Veterans Court. This is just another layer of good stuff on this, this program, and I'm happy to be part of it. So, I'm, I'm not looking forward to the incident, but when something like this happens, I'm really looking forward to having this option in our toolbox to respond, so, that's it.
Thank you, Chief.
And I, I'd like to echo what Chief Cooper said, you know, this is, I appreciate, you know, we've always had such great positive reactions from KPD when we've asked them to be involved with the Veterans Treatment Court, whether it been, you know, be providing the color guard for our graduations, whether it be, you know, this program here, whether it be providing new participants for us upon arrest. And it, but no, they've always, they've always been a great partner and have always supported our veterans here in this community, as well as our Veterans Treatment Court, and, and I, I think this is a wonderful deal. So, tomorrow, again, we have a Vet Court graduation. We'll be graduating one veteran tomorrow, our 83rd graduate of the Veterans Treatment Court. And, but before all that, I know the city is doing a, a big push to celebrate our veteran employees. And so, we're going to be doing a photo shoot at the, in front of the courthouse with all city, as many as we can get, city employees who are also veterans. They're going to take a picture on the front steps of the courthouse. And then, when we start the court proceedings, we're going to be presenting the lapel pins that you saw Chief Cooper show to all the KPD officers who can be there tomorrow, you know, that's with their branch of service, and they'll be wearing those moving forward as part of their uniform. So, we're excited about that. And again, we just think this is so critical to, you know, going out to those veteran calls to help de-escalate the situations. And maybe if that's done, it, it will minimize them having to actually come through the court process. So, anything we can do to help support our veterans, I, I think it's a, it's a wonderful deal. It's a wonderful opportunity. And, and then for the KPD officers who can't be there tomorrow, obviously, we can't have all of them there. We're going to still try to do something over at KPD where we can give them their lapel pins too. So, the goal will be to get to all the officers at some point, the ones who can't show, either show up tomorrow, and the ones who can't, we'll make sure that they are recognized, because again, like I've always said, these are most cherished citizens, so. Does anybody have any questions?
Counsel? Yes.
Chief Cooper, is Dispatch going to be charging on that?
There was. There we go. Will Dispatch be coordinating this for you guys?
So, a little bit. We're still working out what that looks like. They definitely have protocols in place, and we want, we just don't want to complement that. But they're going to have the same list that we do. We have a master list of who is a veteran and which shift that they're working on. So, there is coordination there, but we're working with them to see how's the best way to maybe activate this as soon as possible. But currently, how it's going to be is they have a list, we have a list, the duty sergeant supervisor is, is fully aware of who is that, and it's always, should be at the top of his, his consideration as he's thinking about the situation.
Any other questions?
I could add something there.
Oh, yes.
Again, it's one of these scenarios where they're not always going to know that somebody's a veteran out there. But, you know, with the growth and the support that this community has had for our veterans, you know, if there's a call out to Veterans Villas, odds are it's going to be a veteran involved, you know? So, I think that helps us as we've worked on improving, you know, veterans homelessness. and doing these different communities, the tiny homes, the Veterans' Villas. So they're not always gonna automatically know it's a veteran involved, but based on location, a lot of times, they will, so.
Great, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Judge Singer, you're magnificent. Thank you so much for the Veterans' Treatment Court, all the good works that you do for our beloved veterans. I could get emotional. Truly, thank you so much, and I will see you tomorrow. I wouldn't miss it.
Thank you.
1:30.
1:30.
Yes, 1:30.
Okay. Once again, a plug for Veterans' Court at 1:30. It's actually, as Councilman Mello said, it's oftentimes moving to see these veterans and the change they made in their life to, you know, when they've gone through your court system and how you've helped them to be better people. It's quite moving. So we appreciate all you do, both of you, for this program. So thank you. Item 7B, short-term rental model ordinance. Mr. Cooper?
That would be me, sir. Hopefully, Aaron can pull up my presentation as well. And while he's doing that, I do wanna commend Judge Singer as a Army veteran myself. I think his compassion and his dedication to the veterans and the Veterans' Treatment Program is very commendable. So mine is the short-term rental program. I don't. I can't. Maybe Annie can figure it out. While that's happening, just kind of where this started out is the state legislature passed Senate Bill 1168 regarding short-term rentals, that's Airbnb. Prior to the passage of that, the ordinance has basically restricted the city's ability to do any kind of regulations. And what this statute, or I should say, the statute's restricted, so what the statute did is it opened it up a little bit and allowing us to do a few things. So what I wanna do is just present a few very basic options for, to see what the council is looking for, if they desire any of this, and then that'll allow me to proceed with getting the ordinance kind of straightened up. And generally, what happens when there's a big push from some lobbying group regarding an industry, the league will draft a model ordinance, and that's been put into that packet. And that model ordinance helps to ensure that all of the cities are close as much as possible to providing best practices on those kind of regulations. And it kind of helps avoid some discrepancies just for the industry itself, so that it's kind of uniform across the state. So what I wanna just kinda touch on, let's see, I kinda covered that. The first part is that bottom bullet point with this, the possibilities, is we can do a permit license scheme or just a registration. And the differences between the two is a permit slash a license is sort of like a business license, would be an annual process. Who would run that show? I would say it's probably gonna be the Finance Department, but I hate to add extra work, but it's not my
I think that is absolutely accurate.
Yeah. The other option is called a registration process, and that would be almost a one-time process where they would just, as soon as they decide they're gonna do this kind of short-term rental program, you would just sign up one time and provide the information. The permit would be an annual. So the things that we're allowed to do, if you wanna go move forward with this, would be requiring an emergency point of contact, and I think that's a big problem that many cities, neighborhoods have or neighbors have, is there's a party next door and they can't get it under control, or law enforcement has to go out and try and get things under control, find out who's the owner of the property and be able to contact them. The ordinance, the model ordinance that was shown allows for, I think it's like a 30-minute response time or an hour-long response time, and some of that can be modified, but that allows the city to be able to contact these peoples, or even a neighbor to be able to contact the owner of the property, maybe get some of that activity under control. The second bullet point is compliance with the law and prohibited uses. That's just some basic, comply with zoning, restrict commercial activities, restrict alcohol sales, sexually-oriented businesses. There's some kind of off-the-scale prohibitions there that I would think wouldn't have been allowed anyways, but it's good to note them out. The third bullet point is a neighborhood notification, and what that would be is when anybody applies for this license or registers, they just have to notify their immediate neighbors, which means next door, kitty corner across the street, just kind of that immediate circle. The advertisement requirements would be if you're posting on Airbnb, you just list your registration or permit number that's been issued by the city. The posting on the property is similar. What it would do is on the property, you would just have a sign that's gonna say this is permit-registered, contact information, so someone can get a hold of them. And again, these are all, if that's the direction the council wants to go. There's a point for insurance requirements. I think as it's listed currently, it talks about a $500,000 liability insurance requirement that the owner would need to maintain. That's gonna obviously protect them and any of the people that are occupying that property. There's an option for background checks. The background checks would just be looking for sexual offenders to make sure that they're not registering to people who are on that registry list. In addition, there are talk, there's some discussion points of a permit suspension regulation. So if there's a point in time where that owner of that property does one of several potential violations of the permitting process, they would be able to get their permit suspended for operation. There's an appeals process similar to what happened earlier, where someone can appeal. That would be more internal. Then obviously, there's a judicial review, which is available for anybody that has any problems with governmental action. That's a very high-level overview. I just wanted to get a figure on, is there a direction from council to support something like this? Were those options interesting? Were they something you wanted to pursue? And then what I would do is you should be able to see that the model ordinance is in there. I would be able to plug in the city codes, the city regulations, and those options that the council's looking for. So I have, open for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Questions from counsel? Yes, Mr. Savage.
Mr. Cooper, what is considered a short-term rental?
I'll have to go through the definition, but it's basically... That's not a question I expected to be asked. It's defined in the ordinance as well as the statute. Any individually or collectively owned single-family, one-to-four-family house or dwelling unit or any unit or group of units in a condominium cooperative that is also transient public lodging establishment or owner-occupied residential home offered for transient use, does not include some properties under a statute that I don't recall off the top of my head, any units that's used for non-residential. And basically, what it's talking about is when it adds in those houses that are offered for rental through an online management process, Airbnb. So there's a number of definitions that kind of pop around that will reflect back to state statutes. But it doesn't give a
Sorry. Go ahead. You wanted to continue.
Yeah. To me, it's sounding like they're putting their hand in the cookie jar, trying to take control of a market. So, you know, it'd be nice to know the actual timeframe, because that could end up going into, when they say non-residential, when you got a renter just renting, is it gonna affect that property? Because those properties are also advertised online with
No, I think it's gonna be the short-term, less than 30 days is where it falls under those definitions. So you're, yeah, you're definitely avoiding that sort of thing. It is specifically designed by the legislature just to, the Airbnb types.
Maybe it's
And this is not restricting the uses of those at all. All it is, is, as I outlined, just getting contact information, registration if that's so desired, that sort of thing, so.
Okay. Councilman Maseley, did you have a comment?
Um
Oh, sorry, Mr. Foggan.
Yeah, just to give you some feedback, my opinion on this. I don't think we should make it too cumbersome for somebody to have a vacation rental here in town. This is a lot of things, a lot of hoops to jump through. I don't think we even have that many vacation rentals. And I used to have, I used to run a vacation rental down in Bisbee, and my experience was that if you list on vrbo.com, they already have certain requirements that they want to make sure that you're not a shady business. So I would say, in my opinion, I think they definitely need a business license through the city of Kingman. I think that we need to require that they have certain safety things that the fire department would wanna see, like you need fire extinguishers, a fire alarm, carbon monoxide, that kind of thing. I wouldn't wanna get into insurance requirements, background checks, letting the neighbors know, advertisement requirements. I think it's dangerous to make them post that it's a vacation rental outside, because then when it's empty, you're just advertising to, you know, the wrong types that the house is empty, and you can go in and clean it out, and who knows when the next person will be there. So I would say, other than business license, we wanna make sure they're paying their sales tax on those rentals and making sure that they know that we require it to be a safe place. Oh, and I think we should be specific about, are we gonna let people rent out their RV that's parked in the driveway as a short-term rental? Because in some cities, they're seeing that happen, and so we need to be clear. Personally, I don't think we should allow that. I think that goes against our current ordinances anyway, but we should be clear that you can't, you know, park an RV in your backyard and then turn that into VRBO. Those, I think, are all my comments.
Okay. Also, did you, what was your feelings on permit license or just register? I was gonna bring that, and I was gonna ask that anyway.
Right. I think they should go through an annual permit process. Oh, and if they become a problem, there should be a point at which, you know, if police are constantly being called because it becomes a party house or, you know, something's going on there, that there should be the opportunity to revoke their permit if they're just being a nuisance to the neighborhood.
That won't be an option.
That isn't an option.
That is not an option. Yeah, the regulations are, just as I'm kind of outlining, it's very restricted on how far you can go. So it's, like I said, it's mostly contact information, so they can
So, okay, then we should definitely have the owner's contact information as part of this process, but that's all.
Yeah.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't spend, you know, city employees' time making sure that somebody's jumping through a whole bunch of hoops.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons why I wanted to bring this to the council, make you aware that this exists and whether or not you wanted to pursue anything before. I spent too much time on it as well, so. And I do agree with you, the background checks, I think most of those companies already do background checks, so.
So it sounds like, Carl, just about everything on that list except for a neighbor notification and posting on the property? And insurance requirements. So I think about almost every, and background checks. So almost everything else, I think the council is interested in? Of course, council members?
Well, I respectfully disagree, Jamie. I would like to be notified as a neighbor. I think they should, what you have on the list is appropriate, in my opinion, because I know in Lake Havasu, they are having problems with this type of thing. And I certainly would, I mean, I have my daughter's neighborhood, there is an Airbnb on her street, and it isn't always perfect. I would like to see the list as it stands.
And I would just say, on the notification, the way the statute and the ordinances are looking at it, it's kind of a one-time deal, and it's like, say, it's just those immediate people. But again, it's council's discretion. I, no, no.
For example, when it says neighborhood notification, is like with, like a public notice notification, like within 300 feet, does it give any guidelines on that?
It's how we'd wanna have that. It's our option how we'd wanna do that. It could be, you know, drop a little flyer.
If they don't like, if they don't like it, they don't have a say, because you can't Yeah.
We can't stop this.
You can't stop it.
You cannot stop these kind of rentals. All this is, is just providing, I think the major point of this is just so we know who's doing it and the ability to contact those people.
So if we went with a notification, it would really just be about letting them know who really owns the house, who you could complain to if there's noise.
Right. Yeah, the ability to even take away this permit is severely restricted. It's basically talking about if the owner commits a felony, if the owner does something that's just so abhorrent and reckless, it's really
That's so interesting.
A one little baby step towards just trying to address Airbnb-type of situations.
Well, a lot of cities are wrestling with this, as has been pointed out. And so any other comments or questions from counsel? Yes, Counsel Walker?
I would support like an annual permit or come in, fill out the paper, tell us who the owner is, because the house could be sold, and if they've registered it once, you know, we wanna know who the new owners are. And I think the immediate neighbors should be notified, maybe just by a letter, saying, "This is what this is, and here's their contact number if you have a problem," and you know, or call the local PD. I think that would be enough. And I agree with you, I wouldn't post it that it's a vacation home. I think that's asking for problems. But I know Havasu, I've heard of four stories there, Scottsdale, they've all had a lot of issues. I don't think we're gonna have anything close to what they have. But I think notifying the immediate neighbors and, you know, an annual permit would be fine.
Okay. Any other guidelines or guidance for Mr. Cooper?
I just, I think it's a great thing to do. I realize we don't have a lot now, but one of the things that Kingman is so beautifully central located is we're gonna have Super Bowls at two different stadiums. We're going to be a place that they're gonna arrive at. We're going to be something on the outside, so getting ahead of it now is a good idea.
Okay, so what I take is we're looking at me bringing something back that points with point of contact, the annual license, and neighborhood notification.
No background check?
Yeah.
No insurance requirement?
Yeah.
No posting on the property?
Makes sense.
Real quick.
Yes, ma'am?
Just because of the profession, we may want to take a look at the insurance, just what it is that the ordinance is gonna allow us to do, just because if something does get damaged, you can fall back on the homeowner to take care of that. And if they don't have enough on their insurance, it's, it would be a moot point, and we might be stuck with some, maybe our police officers get hurt or something along those lines.
We're not gonna, it's not necessarily be something that benefits us, per se. It's gonna be just to ensure that they do have that adequate coverage for those properties.
Any kind of damage that could happen, whether, whether one of their users has damaged something or something.
Right, and it's just setting that, this is as the statute, at $500,000. It's, you know, like I said, it's not necessarily benefiting
Instead of setting a dollar amount, can we just make sure they have renters' insurance?
I'll double-check and make sure, and if I can do that, it's something I'll let you guys know when I bring it back, and if it's, it seems like it's an option that we can deal with, we can, just verification of having insurance.
Mr. Cooper, can you check to see if no more homeowner's policy that they currently have on their home, say they move out for six months, then someone rents it for a month or two, that would be sufficient?
Yeah, and now, the problem is the more we delve into the insurance, then we're gonna be interpreting their insurance, and the insurance is as good as the day they show it to us. So the next day, it may not be. So that's why I had some concerns about it, because then we're trying to police that action as well. But if it's something that we can have them display, or at least let us know they have insurance, you know, I think that's, it seems reasonable, yeah. It's, and again, it's not something we're necessarily gonna rely on, but it's just to provide, at least to ensure that those people that are coming into our community at least have, they're not in some death trap and not can be able to get some kind of
I'm also saying that in place of renters' insurance.
Right. Yeah, no, I understand.
Okay. No other questions from Mr. Cooper? Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item number eight, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. Mr. Foggan, we will start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Got a few things, so bear with me. The Tri-City Council meeting is tomorrow at 10 o'clock in Lake Havasu at their Public Works Maintenance Facility. We've got Walk Away From Drugs tomorrow, and we would like to make sure that the council gets invited to that, and the council's asked if you, there's actually three places in which they walk from. If you come, they would like for you to come to the Smiths', back of the Smiths' store is where the walk starts. If you can be there by 5:30, the walk actually starts, I believe, at 5:45. So if you're planning on coming, that is where you have been asked to show up and walk from. But if there, you know, if you walk from another location, no, no big deal. But if there's, you know, if you walk from another location, no big deal. And then we have, this October 29th, from 10 to 2, the police department is doing coffee with cops in conjunction with the Drug Takeback Day. And they're going to be doing that at Kate, in their front parking lot at the Kingman Police Department. And then, just as a reminder, Veterans Day Parade is November 12th at 10 a.m. That is a downtown parade. We will plan on having the council wagon there for the council to participate in. And then finally, on that very same day, hard to believe, but it is true, that Arizona Department of Water Resources is holding an irrigation non-expansion area public hearing at the county building, and that hearing is set for 1 to 5 p.m. And those are my announcements.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. Mr. Walker?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Great. Ms. Melly?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Mr. Savage, welcome once again.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to the citizens that voted for me and you guys allowed me to get my foot.
Right. Council Staley?
Yes, I wanted to also touch on the ADWR meeting that is on November 12th. I don't know if everybody realizes that the, the ADWR, it keeps track of how many people participate in those meetings that are for the INA and are against the INA. And of course, we expect that there will be people there that are against it and they're going to show up in large numbers. And so I, again, want to just encourage everybody to please sign up, to speak, fill out the form when you first walk in, that states who you are and whether or not you support that INA. At the last meeting, we were called to speak at the very end. I spoke, my 12-year-old daughter got up and spoke, and my mother. I basically brought everybody I could to that meeting. And so I want to encourage everybody else to do the same because even though it seems like positive things are happening to protect our water, we don't want to just, you know, rest on our laurels. We want to see this all the way through. So I'm encouraging everyone to please show up and speak at that meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Council Mello?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Nelson? Okay. Some great things going on in Kingman, and I was able to, back on October 6th, attend a town hall that Captain Don Bischoff from the Sheriff's Department sponsored, and it was about mental illness, substance use, and homelessness. And it was well-attended by a lot of professionals from the Kingman area about discussing these problems. And I think distilling a lot of it to one main thing, homelessness became the main focus. If we can solve the homelessness problem, some of those other problems are lessened or even disappear. Anyway, so that was a great, and I'm sure more is going to come from that town hall. Also, back on October 8th, and I always forget this, but the community garden that we have, it's a great community garden over at Cecil Davis Park. And anybody who wants to learn more about gardening, there's some great professionals there. And back on October 8th, they had a community, it was open to the public, it's always open to the public on weekends, I think, anyway, if I remember right. But they had some training classes and some master gardeners were present. Anyway, just wanted to remind people about that opportunity. I think we covered everything. The tough thing about the Veterans Day Parade, and of course, the meeting with ADWR, is that is Veterans Day weekend. That Monday is a Monday holiday. So it's going to be, is it Friday? Okay, so once again, it's a three-day weekend, so it is going to be important for us to get the word out, to support that, going, attending that meeting. And of course, that parade should be a fun parade. One last thing, on October 28th, the Safeway right off the freeway is reopening and they are having a ribbon-cutting, grand reopening on October 28th at 9 a.m. So I would invite any council members to please support them in that. I think, I know a number of us have had people ask us, our citizens, hey, when, what's going on with the old Safeway? Is it going to open back up? And they are opening back up October 28th, Friday, at 9 a.m. So please put that on your calendars. Dina, wrap it up.
I'm going to wrap it up. There is an amazing, important proposition that is on our ballot, Prop 415. We need you to vote, and we need you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine, council request for future reports and updates. Councilors? Council Staley?
Go for it. You're fine. Go for it.
Okay.
I would like to ask that we bring back the ordinance that oversees how our commissions are ran. So I don't know if I need to officially rescind my vote and ask to bring this back, however this needs to happen, but a few of the things that I think that we didn't realize, one, that we won't, we don't get to see all of the applications to review them. And these commissions serve at the pleasure of the council, so I think that we should all be involved in choosing the next commissioners to come in. The other reason why I want to bring it back is because what we've seen at P&amp;Z, there is a problem with some of the limitations that we've put on terms. And so right now in P&amp;Z, we have one person that has several years of experience being on planning and zoning. She's serving as the chair right now, and she's going to term out and be gone, and then we're going to have several commission members that have just only been there a few years. So because of these limitations that we put and the inability to go in and, we used to be able to do a supermajority and we'd add a second term, and she, she actually hasn't had multiple full terms, but it was also in the way that we chose to stagger the terms and the seats, that she's getting the boot early, earlier than she would have anyway. So I'd like to see if we could just bring that back and maybe make a few of these changes in order to sort of improve it. I just, I see a few hiccups there that I, that I want to change, and I don't know if everybody else feels the same, but it would be nice to perfect it.
Okay, thank you. Council Nelson?
I would love to have a discussion on what we are doing with our panhandling. I'd like an in-depth look at what the ordinances are that, that we are supposed to be handling. I mean, the state has a level that we, we've stopped. I mean, the state says this is, you can't do anything about it, but there are other communities that have and are. The vagrant issue is getting dangerous. You know, they're getting very brazen. The unfortunate part is that it's usually not a man that they're going to go after, but it's going to be a single female, it's going to be an elderly person, or it's going to be a family. And we need to, we need to really take a serious look at this. I'd like to know in detail what it is that the, that the state says we can't do because other towns are doing it, we need to do it. We've, we've got to find some way to protect our citizens. This is getting out of hand and scary. These guys are starting to throw things at customer, I mean, at people driving around. There was a guy today, literally pounding on the, on a window of someone coming off of the freeway at Stockton Hill. So it's just, we need to step up somewhere in there. So if we could do something in the discussion of that, that would be great.
Thank you, Councilor. Okay, any others? Okay. I want to circle back one more time to announcement, real quick, because I will be shot if I don't announce this. MCC Mohave Community College, and of course, we work closely with, supporting them, they are having this Thursday, October 20th, it's called a Bighorn Trek, and it's basically like an open house, it's from 10 to 3. It's a job, bear, music, food, and festivities. And that, and once again, is at the campus out on Jaggersen from 10 to 3. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knows about that. Item number 10, executive session. Mr. Cooper has requested that we discuss item A, Eastern Condemnation. The city attorney requests council to go into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431 to discuss and get direction on settlement of condemnation of certain property regarding the eastern project. And we have a motion to go into executive session. Okay, we are going into executive session. Thanks once again to all of you. Of course, we don't expect you to stick around, but you are more than welcome to. But once again, thanks for attending City Council. Now, what does this mean? We're going to go back and right back here. There's also a bathroom back there if you need to use it too. That's executive session. It's the old la, la life, is what it is.